Lynn is supposed to run the meeting. Forrest, are you online? Are you okay if I have to start things?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start so we can get started. And Linda, I know it's coming, but. Kim is not going to join us for the conversation about the handover information. She's been chosen as one of the team of appraisers to do the land appraisal for the acquisition and condemnation process. And so she called a little bit ago and just said that she she would come, you know, when this conversation is over. But we all appreciated her decision to step away and not be involved in any of that. So we have with us this afternoon Jenny Jennifer McCoslin, who's the Andover City Administrator, and Lance Onstod, who is the Assistant City Administrator, and then Mayor Ronnie Price. I don't know that Ronnie is going to do any of the presentation, but Jennifer and Lance are going to go through the information that you have in front of you and that I sent you. They have a work session tonight at seven and asked that we, you know, work within that timeframe so they can get back and prepare for their work session. So probably about forty five minutes, maybe a little bit longer than that. And if we still have information that we need, I have emailed Jenny today and I know we'll be going to connect with us again, you know, if necessary, but they're they're gonna go through this information and I think kind of direct the process. Thank you for being here. Do you want us to introduce ourselves or are you okay? Okay, let's let's go around and introduce trustees for sure, okay?
Shelby Smith. David Shear.
Mary Martha Good.
And the other folks and then Forrest Rhodes is online. He's our chair. Linda John will be here in a second. She's the Vice Chair. And then in the room, Kelly Stedman, Director of Public Relations and Marketing, Tom Moreno, Vice President of Advancing, Carrie Posner is our Assistant Director. Director, sorry about that. Kelly Salt is the A D P of A R. Bill Rankin, Vice President of Service, Tom Neville, Vice President of Department of Art and My Assistant Assistant. Phil Sperry, Dean of Possession and all things being related. Dr. Julio Guerrero is our Dean of Public Engagement and Public Experiences. And then Jennifer, Jennifer, sorry, Jessica, Dr. Jessica Elman are Assistant B P. Perfect, yeah.
Can you hear me? Yes, is it on? Okay. Okay, we're going with it, right? Well, we've got before you tonight a presentation. We've broken it up into three areas because there's a lot of information here. So I'm going to give an overview of what we're going to talk about. Jennifer, could you advance the slide for me? Awesome. Thank you so much. So first Lance is going to talk a little bit about development projects and infrastructure generally, just because this is a world we live in every day and development is something that we do all the time, realizing that this may or may not be something that this group is particularly familiar with. Then I'm going to walk through, even though this started just over three years ago. I think virtually everyone sitting at this table was not sitting at this table when these decisions were made just over three years ago. So we're going to give you some history on what brought us to where we are today and then talk about where we go to move forward. So I'll turn it over to Lance.
Good evening, trustees. As Jenny said, my name is Lance Onstod. I'm the Assistant City Administrator for the City of Andover. So again, as Jenny said, again, so the first part of kind of what we're going to talk about is development projects in Andover and the related and required infrastructure. So again, things we deal with every day. And I think are required to have kind of a solid understanding of what this project looks like. So whenever somebody comes to develop a project within the city of Andover, there are a number of different regulations that are required. Our job as staff with our governing body is to ensure that we that we require those regulations to be followed. So the state enables these types of regulations. The first one that we're going to did primary one we're going to talk about tonight. Like I said, there's a lot of them. But the ones we're going to focus on tonight are what we call subdivision regulations. So anytime somebody wants to come do a project within the city of Andover, property needs to be subdivided or legally platted. And I'm going to use subdivision and plating kind of as synonyms in this conversation. One of the fundamental aspects of that and the reason why all municipalities, city of Andover included, requires it is to make sure that the requisite infrastructure to not only serve that project, but to ensure that future projects, future developments develop in an orderly, harmonious, kind of efficient way. So things that you guys, I'm sure, are all aware of, water, sanitary sewer, stormwater drainage, streets, transportation, these are all things that we as the professional staff for the city of Andover require to be addressed in any and all development projects. So this is where we'll start. Three, four years ago in 2019, the college came to the city with a plan to build the maintenance building at the Thirteenth Street Campus in Andover, as well as to renovate the 5,000 building. So staff, city staff, our governing body, staff from the college, the colleges, consultants, development agents worked through that plating process, that subdivision process. And through that identified that the required improvements for that particular project are the the improvement or paving of Commerce Street to the south or the left on the picture that you see here. Yorktown Parkway to the east, the bottom side of the picture. And then there's also water lines in both of those streets. So here we'll kind of talk generally how this works. So we've identified the required improvements for all development projects and standard development projects. So when we're talking about standard projects for the purpose of tonight's conversation, it's really what we're referring to as a is a private or you can call it a for-profit developer. So typically, these required improvements that we identify during that subdivision process are generally paid 100% by the for-profit development. The city is the conduit because they're public infrastructure, but funding of the projects, including the engineering design, the construction, all is funded through various processes at the city, but generally 100% funded by the developer or the owner of the property that's developing. In Andover, we've got a pretty strong tradition in projects that include multiple public partners. So we as one side of that partnership. And then you, in this particular case, as as another governmental jurisdiction or taxing jurisdiction. We've done plenty of projects just in the time that I've been with the city of Andover with USD 385. And we typically address those as again, both being taxing jurisdictions more from a partnership perspective. So what I'm referring to when I say that is kind of a cost sharing perspective, which is kind of encapsulates or demonstrates what our current relationship is. So the picture on the right here, we went through, I think, around the same. We just finished construction on it. And actually, we're still wrapping up some things, but kind of related to your projects in Andover, the school district also did their bond projects. Part of that was a requirement for them to improve the infrastructure directly adjacent. What you see here is Andover Road. And there was a similar cost sharing relationship between the two. So the last part of my presentation, my portion of the presentation is to talk a little bit about these specific improvements. The reason why they are specifically required for this particular project. So dating back multiple comprehensive plans. So these are studies that the state legislature or plans, the state legislature requires cities that have some sort of land use control to have. These are long range plans, typically 10 years in the city of Andover. Scope encompasses the entire city. So that way, when we're making determinations on not only land use, but required public improvements, we're doing it from a place that's been studied, engineered. A place of logic ration and and long-term planning. So we've had this goal, the city, to have an additional north-south transportation corridor street dating back multiple comprehensive plans. In 2019, we did hire an engineering firm to do an analysis of this projected Yorktown corridor. So again, this is this the street to the east of your guys' Andover campus. It included 2,570 acres of development that would use this corridor. Once it was fully built out, using the historical growth rate of the city of Andover, we would anticipate or project that those additional acres will be developed by 2040. So now, if you look to the right of the actual graphic, you'll see kind of a green section and a blue section. As part of that corridor analysis, we did some track traffic volume projections. So what you see there is A D T is average daily trips, vehicle trips. So obviously, no vehicle trips today because the streets don't exist. By the end of 2040, we're anticipating that segment. So that's why there's a blue and a green there. So there I'm talking to that northernmost segment from from what is Woodstone Drive to 13th. So the north part of that to have 22,000 average daily vehicle trips, then that blue segment to be 12,000 average daily vehicle trips. So in addition to that study and that, we obviously, when we do transportation improvements, it's all aimed at just the overall transportation system for not only Andover residents, students, staff, faculty, visitors to the college, to the rest of the community, again, to make sure that we're we're managing our growth in a in an orderly fashion. And lastly, you know, going through the subdivision process, there's a lot of things that we look up, look at as staff. But planning for these street and water systems is really a fundamental component of what we do as urban planners and designers and engineers and city managers. So I think at that point, anything will kind of pause for questions that are kind of related to the development process generally, required improvements. And then I'll give you a I'll give you Jenny for the rest of the conversation.
So is by your map, is Yorktown then, is it developed? It looks like kind of from Kellogg up to, is it central? Right south of the, and I'm kind of referencing the park where the where the amphitheater is and stuff like that, that I mean, I've seen the roads around the park because of Music Theater, Wichita being over there and stuff like that, but I'm assuming that Central down to Kellogg is complete. It's Kellogg or Central up to the 13th is what you want to complete. Are you going to go all the way up to 21st? 13th now or 21st later?
13th is what we have planned now. Once you get north of 13th, you start running into some just geographical issues there. And then we'll probably utilize Prairie Creek to the east to kind of connect up to 21st. But yes, you're right. So Yorktown from south of Kellogg, actually down by the YMCA and the elementary school cross. And then we've, I think, three years ago, I have completed all the way up to Central. The project specifically for your campus is is a segment of the very north end. And then the city is actually working on from the south side of your campus to Central at the same time. So we're hopeful by the end of next year, you'll be able to go from the south of Kellogg all the way to 13th along Yorktown.
Kind of right north from where you turn south to the park, turning north to from the park.
Correct. Yep. Straight north from the park.
Okay, so now I've kind of got a visual.
I've got a couple of questions. Looking through the contract, I can't see where we are required to pay 30% increase wherever it is. I don't see that language in the contract.
I think you'll get to that towards the end of.
I guess part of we're just talking about geographics. Part of my concern is the campus benefits Andover. Now we're going to push people to Yorktown and bypass all the small businesses that they frequent now. And then Yorktown is not a shorter route. People coming from Wichita, that's a longer route. And depending on what the stoplight situation is, you're either going to turn a van over or just blow through the light and catch York and maybe. But I don't see it as a benefit or boon to local businesses on Andover. And it's not going to bring us more students to our college regardless of where.
Yeah, I think in there I can probably address kind of the the traffic projection. So we know that, you know, Kellogg and Andover Road will have between 30 and 40,000 average daily trips today. Taking, you know, 13th and Andover Road or 21st and Andover Road, you're between 10 and 11,000. So we know that a lot of those from Wichita, you know, come using Kellogg, but also between Kellogg and your campus on Yorktown is also, you know, the location right there, Kellogg and Andover Road of, you know, 200 some million dollar mixed-use development that'll have restaurants and all kinds of different services. So.
New business, new business get the benefit. But our our enrollment in Andover specifically from 2018 has dropped from 56,500 to 30,700, which is a decrease of 46%. I don't think necessarily traffic increases currently applying to what we're dealing with. No, I understand, but I mean, it's not like something that's, I really don't want to pick up the tab on a lot of 400 extra thousand dollars for the cost for the increased traffic that we're going to get on the road because we're currently not experiencing. I just want to legally require to, or if it's just something to be nice to do because but also says in the contract, I guess we're going to get to later, that it was completed expeditiously. And here we are almost four years later.
Sure, why can I go? Yeah, I'll go on to the next part because I I think that answers a lot of it. So back in in 2019 and and we keep talking about four years and we'll get to this in a minute, but the petitions came to the city council at their last meeting of the year in 2019 in December. So to be clear, the petitions were the very end of 2019. So we're really talking about 2020 when the petitions had been signed and accepted. But ironically, some of the concern of the trustees at the time, none of whom are here today, we've answered now that we fast forward a time because back then the concern was that the roads and would you back up Jennifer just to those to the, yeah, to the map? So there was concerns, you can see this, you know, the inverted L around Butler up at the north end that if we only did that part because that's what your petitions are for, that part of the road project, that it was a road to nowhere. Well, that's how we do development because we do the development as the development occurs and Butler Community College was doing development at that particular portion. Ironically, if we'd said, good point, let's wait till there's more money and funding down the road, would have pushed it down the road. And ironically, today it feels like we're hearing, why didn't we do this four years ago? So either way, darned if we do, darned if we don't. The good news is that we now have an answer for that middle part. So the portion between your inverted L and Central, as we were talking about earlier, we've got some funding. So let me kind of walk you through how we got here. You can go head back to that other slide. When we first came to the table with the college and the conversation was that they wanted to do this expansion at the campus and these would be the requirements. The trustees at the time felt like we don't want to pay for the roads. We we don't want to do this. And so actually, the college sued the city of Andover over this very thing. And the judge said, sorry, the city has the right through state law, through subdivision regulations to require improvements. This case is not ripe to come to the court. And he really kind of, it was Judge Ricky, kind of admonished all the parties. Figure it out. Guys are public partners. You're all funded with taxpayer dollars. Do the best thing for the taxpayers. And I feel like we came out of that with a resolve that we were going to do that. And so that was in October of 2019, just for reference, because everyone in the room is relatively new. I became city administrator the last week of September 2019. So this was all right around the same time. We did come to an agreement that the college would pay 60%. The city would pay 40%. Those petitions were executed. I believe the trustees then in October of 19, maybe November, but right around there.
I think they were signed in December.
Okay, and then they came to the city council, signed for our side to execute in December as well. I will note here, we talked earlier, Lance talked about public-private differences when we have development. When we have a private developer, we require what we call a letter of credit or a financial guarantee. So that we don't get to a point in a few years down the road where the improvements haven't occurred, maybe. And then there's a decision that maybe we don't want to do the project now because then we can go pull money from that letter of credit. We waive that for public partners because we trust each other on our word. And so there's no letter of credit. That was a good faith effort by the city to take everyone at their word in 2019. We can go on to the next slide. In 2020, I think we all, whether we want to go back there and remember what happened in that first quarter or not, the pandemic hit in March of 2020. And the world went upside down for you all, went upside down for us, and it went upside down for everyone in between. It would have been nice if it was an acute problem and it only caused issues for 2020, but what we know, especially in regard to construction costs, is that issue continued on through 2021 through 2022 and even through today. We had in like a perfect storm of things occur. We had federal money coming down. Still to this day, we're getting federal money that infiltrates down through various ARPA programs that was really funding construction projects, driving up demand for projects. We have a labor market that seems to have shrunk and we don't have the workers to do the work. We have supply chain issues. The Federal Highway Administration indicated that between 21 and 22, average costs for highway and bridge construction was up 20% just in that year. And you know, that's a marker. So that means some of the projects came in higher than that and some of them came in lower. But on average, they said the cost to do construction of bridges, highways went up 20% just in that year alone. We see that locally. Again, we have maybe the unfortunate jobs of getting to work in this space every day. And so it seems like every project that we have taken on in the last three years has come back much higher than we would have liked it. And we are using informed, educated, professional architects, engineers to build our estimates on the front end. It's just the construction market is very variable. It always is. It's very variable right now. So our 13th Street Sports Park, we went to taxpayers in November of 21. That project, which is under construction now, increased 143% between 21 and 22. That is not scope crawl. That is actually some scope reduction. We are building five baseball diamonds. They are not turf. I get that question all the time. They are grass. There's nothing extra fancy about this project. Doesn't include many buildings. It does include one concession stand and bathrooms, but otherwise, a lot of earthwork, some playgrounds, splash pads, that one's up 143%. The other part of that sales tax was a new fire station and a remodel of our current fire station. Those are buildings, so slightly different than building a highway and I or a road, but I I acknowledge that still construction cost, that project went up 40% between 21 and 22. The best apples to apples I have for you is that North Andover Road that Lance showed you earlier that we worked with the school district on. That project went up 13% between 91 and 2020 or 2019 and 2021. So we see this all the time is really my point in telling you this. We we certainly wish this wasn't what we keep seeing. Going back now to 2020, that's the context of the world we're in. City staff works hard, taking Judge Ricky's admonition, and we shepherd the 5,000 building and the maintenance building through all the necessary permits. We do a couple of things that we don't typically do. We don't typically issue temporary certificates of occupancy. But we understood our public partners at USD 385 needed you guys out of their high school. You guys needed a place to have your classes and we understood that we have a role to play here and we can be difficult and say not everything necessary for the permanent certificate of occupancy is done. So you don't get to occupy your building. Or we could say, okay, we're going to work with you temporary certificates of occupancy. Let's get you guys into the classrooms. That's what we did. Just wanting to show that once again, that public partnership at play. In 21, we do finally issue the permanent certificates of occupancy for both buildings and that summer. Part of that requirement is that those roads were going to be built. Regardless of if the prices went up. So now we're in 21. So so we're over a year and a half past where we were before. The roads haven't been built. Everybody knows that. The trustees know that. The city knows that. We're moving forward. Was a decision point decided to move forward, knowing that the most important thing was to continue classes at the college. Now 2022 comes. And some of that federal money still coming down to the local governments and colleges and school districts is still arriving. We get great news on April 11, 2022, that that road to nowhere is now not an issue because that middle section we keep pointing out, we've received a base grant, which is basically the state's re-packaged version of ARPA funds, how Department of Commerce handed out funds. And what's most important about that is there is a landowner who is not the most interested and willing in providing the necessary right of way. And so that money is going to allow us to, if we have to, which P S footnote, we have to condemn the land. Now we've got the money to move forward with that land condemnation and make that happen. Very exciting time. And then 18 days following that award, an EF3 tornado comes through Andover and once again, somewhat reprioritizes the work plan that we had last year. So this is kind of what's gotten us through the last three years. And I'll put a pause point there before we go into where do we go forward? Did that answer some of the questions about? I mean, it's really up to you if you have to. I guess that would be.
That's my question legally by law, by contract, are we obliged to, do we have to pay any more than we agreed to pay minus?
Well, you agreed to 60% and 60% when we're going to build is more.
Specifically ask if we have paid more dollars than we agreed to back in the day. I don't remember, 1.8 million whatever it is.
Okay, if that's the only question, then we'll just go on into this next part unless there's another clarifying question because I think the next part really talks about that.
I think the only thing that I would, you and you kind of mentioned it on the front end is that you know, the conversations with the city of Andover, you know, we're, you know, 18 months to 24 months prior to that point in time where we got to in 2019. And they've been really ongoing for an extended period of time. So and they were part of and and part of that negotiating on the percent difference was part of those conversations. So I I think you need to turn your microphone on because Forrest said he couldn't hear you when you introduced yourself.
We aren't really going to vote on anything tonight, but I know that note to Kim is that I'd really like to have what it cost us to sue over this originally. Because I I feel like that might be the same thing happening if we don't come up with the increased amount. Does that make sense? So I I just like to kind of balance where we are as as far as expenditures.
I'll sure have to go back and dig that information out. I don't have it handy, but it'll it'll take a little bit of effort and I'll have to visit with Ray because I don't, I can't even give you a ballpark.
Okay, should we go on and then we can?
But yeah, let's go on.
Okay, I think my question is answered on the final page, isn't it?
Yeah, that's I think I think we're getting there. I'm like slow.
Trying to keep up.
Building up to it. So the the numbers that were in your petitions were provided by professional engineering consultants. That is the college's project engineer for this project. It is typical for the city to retain the design engineer goes much more smooth when the same engineering firm that designed the project sees the project through to construction continues with those inspections. So we have retained professional engineering consultants, P E C, to do the project. They alerted the city in February that the numbers had increased and escalated. And that's that 399,000 for the college and 266,000 for the city. Concurrently, now that we've got the funds and we've dealt with the immediate tornado issues, we have proceeded with the condemnation. We are in the middle of condemnation actions on the adjacent land that is necessary for the road. And that started this summer as well. Last month, we re-verified the numbers with P E C to be sure before we came here to talk to you again that these numbers, this 2.5, that this was still legitimate, good numbers, they indicated, yes, those numbers are still valid and accurate for what they're seeing in the market today. The reason we're here then is to ask you to repetition. This is not unique to this project. We have private developers have to repetition. It's almost become an unfortunate punchline that the low bid is routinely going to the engineer, which is not good. You would like the low bid to go to the construction company. So what's happening in a lot of our developments? And I've got an example from every year from 20 through 2023 is that the engineers estimate what it's going to cost to fit in all of this infrastructure. And then when they go to bid, it comes back higher. So that's exactly what's happened here is essentially what we started with as our estimates has escalated since the project began. The petition, I want to be very clear, it sets the maximum. We are never ever going to charge you more than it costs to do the project on rare occasion. And here's some insight into why construction can be so variable. Every once in a while, the stars align and you get a project that comes in under the engineer's estimate. And I've got an example here that just happened in June, Founder's Parkway. Construction companies get a bunch of queue of work and they need to keep their employees on their payroll. And they might have a great big project in seven months and they don't want to lose the employees and let them go. But they don't have enough work to keep them going in between. So when the stars align and they're mobilized in the area, they might be willing to come in under and come in. They might be willing to come in under and come in low because they need to keep that work going. So it's possible that this three hundred and ninety nine thousand will not be realized. And and what I want to be very clear on is it will go no higher than that. That is the maximum that we're setting. Um, if we don't revise the petitions, then the city will be forced to reevaluate the project with is certainly not something that we want to do. Um. To to reevaluate the end portion of Yorktown up around the college. Think next slide. Look at the numbers. You've seen these, so you're familiar with them, but we did want to break them down by the four different improvements. So that you could see where those numbers were, estimates were coming in. I do want to make a note that again, in this whole continued vein of trying to work with each other as well as we can. On every other infrastructure project, we would add a five percent administrative fee. Because back in our office, we've got a CFO who's going to be spreading specials, working with the bond council, going through the bond sale. There's a lot of of work that goes into the process of financing these improvements. And then also we have a lot of community development staff who oversee the project, work with the construction companies and things of that nature. We're going to waive that five percent. We are not passing that on. This project is already at the point that everybody, both sides are paying more than we hoped we would be paying for this. So that is not included. The other thing I want to really point out is there are right of way acquisitions. There is land acquisition related to the college's part. That will be covered through that those funds we secured through the base grant. And none of that land acquisition is being passed on to the college. None of the legal fees for that is being passed on to the college. That's all going to be absorbed by the city taking care of, and then we can just move forward with construction. So. When we say sixty forty, my math shows, and this is all. Based on a prayer that the con- condemnations come down as low as they possibly can. That it'll be more of a fifty six forty four percent split. Depending on what those condemnations come in, the higher that goes, the more that's going to shift where Andover's percentage goes up and the colleges goes down. And I think that's why Ms. Brungard decided to not come tonight, which I I appreciate her seeing that.
I've I've got a gentleman just went through that on the one fifty ninth street and it's not going to be cheap for the city to.
Yeah, well, familiar with your friends.
Those it might not be the same guy, but those people are not real happy and you're not going to just take whatever.
Nope, definitely a legal proceeding. So.
To clarify, when you say the five percent overhead for the back office, do you charge that typically to public institutions?
We we have charged that to USD three eighty five and others, because the work is that work is still there, that that time is still there. So these are the big dollar amounts. I would never present to you that six figures is a small amount. It's not a small amount. I totally appreciate and value that. But I also think context matters and I know that you all are working in budgets right now about to approve in the millions, just like we are about to approve budgets in the millions. So this comes down to just under a thirty thousand dollar a year increase over the life of the financing. Nothing to sneeze at. I don't mean to diminish it, but I would say in the context of the multimillion dollar annual budget, something somewhat absorbable. The last slide, we just kind of talk a little bit about cooperation and this really kind of just comes to the heart of it. Um, there's a couple of things that can happen if the college doesn't want to maintain this partnership at the sixty forty that was agreed to, albeit before you all sat in these seats. Um, the city has a decision to make. Do we continue to put in the roads directly around the college? Do we reroute the road? Not sure that that's in anyone's best interest. In fact, I know that the college did base some of your strategic plan for the Andover campus. On these roads going in and this circulation pattern serving the school. Um. And I guess my most important sentiment is just, I don't think we want to go back to a place where we were at odds. I feel like we worked really hard to get to a point of agreement. Um, none of us benefit by the cost escalating, but they're also not in anybody's control. And it's it's really our only path forward as we try to move this project on.
So I I would just say when the, you know, when the renovation project for the um, Andover campus was really um, worked on. All of the parking lot, all the engineering, you know, the retention pond that's there, all of that was engineered with the idea that. Uh, Yorktown would eventually come pass, even though at that point in time, we had no idea how it was going to connect. Uh, we did it with the idea again that would create additional access for not only students, but also emergency personnel. And um, shipping and receiving kinds of things, especially off of commerce where they could come into the back of the facilities building. Um, and that it was also engineered and designed to have an an exit right off of Yorktown onto the campus. All of that was engineered within the. The project that was that was planned and and built. Yeah, there'll be an entrance right off of Yorktown. And you know, in in all reality, it's hard to to say whether what it would do from an enrollment perspective. But when you think about the traffic count that's going up and down Andover Road, it's free advertising. You know, free public relations uh with all of the cars going back and forth. So.
Um, where's that advertising at again?
I don't see that.
Coming past the campus and seeing the buildings and seeing the signs.
Are you talking about on Yorktown?
Yes. Yeah, because it would be coming directly past the campus.
Oh, okay. So the way I'm understanding this. Originally. Um, our costs were like one point.
One point one million, I think that's what it was, wasn't it?
One point eight five.
One, one point eight five.
Yes.
Okay, and so. Now we're looking at about, are we looking at? Okay. Our share would be, is it one point five million or is it one point five million plus the three hundred and ninety nine thousand? Is it, is it one point nine or is it one point five million? Like I've seen B C C share, but then I see Butler increase. Is that just the increase? The hundred thousand is the increase on the commerce part, the two hundred thousand and change.
Yeah.
On Yorktown. Okay.
Our original cost, our original estimate was just over one point one million dollars. Now with the increase, our uh estimate is one point five. That's the one.
So that's the three hundred and ninety nine thousand.
It includes that, yes.
Okay, that that part I wanted to make sure. Okay.
Yeah.
So Jennifer, I don't want to get to the point where we're not. Uh, in a good relationship either. The only reason I was asking Dr. Kroll for those previous. Uh, estimates and what we paid for an attorney so that I can justify to voters who asked me, why would we do that? Well, I can show them a plan. I can I can tell them where that plan is, how great it's going to be for Andover and how it does benefit the college. So uh, and I can also say, but if we don't, then this could happen, blah, blah.
I appreciate that.
That was my, that was my reason for that.
Sure.
I see this benefiting because you have your Augusta students who may come over to Andover. That they just turn at a Butler facility at the Culinary Institute, turn right, go all the way up to the thirteenth and. They're not going up Andover Road and all of the. Uh, all of the lights and different things like that.
How many traffic do you think they'll have down?
On Yorktown?
Yeah.
I don't think we have any plans for this stretch.
But you have awfully lot of construction.
Sure, sure.
Plus you have a lot of apartments going up.
Yeah, we do have a lot of apartments going up right now. You're you're over here counting. You think five when we're all built out? Maximum of five.
Yeah.
Sure.
Need a mic. They're they're already.
You'll have to come to a microphone, right?
So the common majority is.
So when the college built this, there's three driveways already off Yorktown into the school. Which will not have everybody going to the back of the school, stopping for people trying to get into the school. But there's three driveways that are already committed and already built for this onto Yorktown. That's one thing. The other thing is just to mention. People don't go in Andover normally from thirteenth street because it's three miles from the school to half a dozen eateries.
So coming off of Kellogg, up Andover Road north is what I'm talking about. You're going to eliminate that traffic.
Yeah, but they don't.
People don't turn north on Andover Road?
Not necessarily, you know.
So Butler puts out a study every year that we tax a second thirteen million dollars and we bring in forty six million dollars for.
And Andover Road and thirteenth street. In about six months, we'll be at failing status because of one forty third and catalog. So a lot of the thing we're doing are to to create safety areas for not only our citizens, but for people coming from Augusta. Going to Wichita because.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Oh, yeah, there is. From Augusta, being specific.
Yeah, but I'm talking about from Augusta going to Wichita. So a lot of this is.
Town, how does work down change that? Westbound traffic. It gets gets people turning for Andover Road.
It's another road through town.
But only if they don't intend to drive straight through to Wichita, right?
I'm talking about to the college. It releases traffic off Andover Road both directions.
But then it also denies the businesses on Andover Road traffic.
You're assuming you're assuming that they go that way.
Well, we're beat over the head constantly about how much money we bring into Andover from having the college there. You have to admit that we do bring in business there or we don't. I'm not trying to get argumentative, but I just.
There's no eateries around the college, right?
I didn't say there was. I said they turned north on Andover Road. They pass Applebee's, Taco Bell, Metro Grill, Oppenheimer's, Kentucky Fried Chicken. I mean, you know what? They're all there. They go past Ace, they go past. We drive past all of that. You go to Dairy Queen.
No, they don't. I'm telling you, man. That's what I.
I want a revision of the statement that the college sends out saying how much Andover benefits.
If you leave the college, just if you leave college, go to lunch. You are not going to go into Andover. People don't. They go into, they can have all the eateries they want right up thirteenth street. Money goes to Wichita. I've had this conversation with our governing body. It's reality.
Our kids are going to go to Red Robin instead of McDonald's or Windows.
Three miles, you can get to Freddy's. You can get to all those places up there, right? They got a bowl now. They're up there.
They're not eateries for college students who are looking to save money. Besides Freddy's.
One, one thing I would like to kind of bring us back to on the um. Andover Road. I hear the the businesses are there and that's absolutely true. Today, there will be a lot of businesses at the Heritage in the relative near future along Yorktown. But um, I'm sure anybody who's driven Andover Road, especially right before eight AM classes are about to happen at Butler, as well as all the USD. Um, campuses, Andover Road can be a little bit hairy. Now granted, you know, we're not big city. We're not not dealing with the kind of traffic they have in Dallas or anything like that. But I will say Andover Road can be um, not the best experience to drive. And that is why the comp plan called out that we needed another north south way. So that if you don't need to make some of those trips, you don't need to be turning in a left or a right turn lane in order to make a stop. That another through town connection would be really valuable and alleviate a lot of traffic. Small accidents and things like that. So that's part of what we're trying to do with that route.
I'm not disputing it, but this morning, my sixteen year old son drove me north on Andover Road to the college at seven fifty AM. Two people slowed down in front of him. One just passed Ace and one. I mean, we had two slow, slow down. I mean, down to fifteen miles an hour. We got to the college. I'm quick to U turn. I didn't have to wait on anybody to exit the college or enter the college. There was one car in front of us in Park. I mean, I I understand that Yorktown is another avenue to get to the college, driving past your new businesses in Andover. I just don't really want to pay another four thousand dollars and I I don't see where we have to unless we're just being neighborly. But I would argue that we're being neighborly by bringing in millions of dollars of revenue to the town.
What, what's the number of houses that are being developed at Prairie Creek? Because those folks probably will also access.
Three, three hundred, three, I would say.
Ones, or is it will be three hundred total, three hundred new ones?
Total for all of Prairie Creek tradition.
I didn't know for sure what, how big that was.
And the Heritage does have about two hundred single family homes and then it's got a hundred and eighty six, I believe, apartment dwellings. And those range from studio to three bedroom.
Yeah, but specifically this morning again, sorry, one last thing. As I returned back to Kellogg, I stopped at Sherman Williams and spent two hundred dollars. Had I gone Yorktown, I would have shot over to Porter Paints or Lowe's. And I would not have backtracked. So I mean, we do stop and spend money there as we travel. Sorry.
No, I was just going to say as a reminder, it's five fifteen and we talked about. Their time, so it's really five fourteen if there's one quick question, but otherwise unless it's pressing, we could move on.
I've got a question at my desk before they leave.
Okay.
Okay, so um, I apologize. I I'm driving, so I I can't really see the slides. I looked at what was shared this morning and my recollection was. I think it was on the last slide, there was a reference to a ten percent escalator. Is that part of the contract itself to where? I mean, the. If I read that right, the college is legally, we're legally committed to ten percent more than the number that was petitioned back in twenty nineteen.
Correct. Yes, I'm glad you brought that up.
Now, I could my 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 follow on question to that is, is the amount that you're asking us to increase to now? Going to also be subject to another ten percent potential escalator if prices continue to go up between now and when this is done?
That it, that is part of the petitions that you can do a one percent crawl per month. Um, the reason the ten percent is put on there is because the Attorney General has issued a opinion that. Ten percent is the max that they think you can do that because otherwise. You you could say this was a three year old project, so thirty six percent. So we're done. But the Attorney General has issued an opinion that ten percent is the cap on where you can take that.
Is is the city expecting to keep that ten percent in? In what you're asking for us to approve now, or would the amount that we're approving now be it be an absolute cap?
We would leave that as is. That is standard for the petitions, but I would say it would be very beneficial for us to get this approved and done because we'll go to bid. Um, and these are good numbers as of last month from the engineer. So the sooner we can bid this, the sooner we can get the number in concrete. That's what we really need is a firm number and then we're not making conjecture any longer.
Did that answer your question, Forrest?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Anyone else quickly? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I appreciate it. We have our works um, sessions on these nights too. So thank you very much. Go do that.
Thanks, thanks Lance. Thanks, Ronnie. Appreciate you being here.
Bye, Ronnie.
Let me uh, we'll go see if Kim is out there. I see Dr. Gordon.
She came in right right back around.
Okay, we'll go make sure that she's in the neighborhood.
I'm just passing it out to you, a copy of the summary that you already have. Uh, wanted to have a copy again.
My chair is not. Flowing through the. Legs very well. Having trouble with my flow.
Okay.
It's not a prostate discussion, is it?
Thanks very much.
I find the legs.
We have. We have um, Dr. Borden Kircher on the line. We um, trustee Brungard joined us. We've got Phil sitting at a microphone here and. Uh, Dr. Borden Kircher, I handed out to the uh, trustees, the summary of the H L C team report that Phil went through at our last um. Did we lose him? Oh, no, there is. Um, at our last board meeting. Um, and so I don't know, Phil, do you have anything that you want to kind of recap? Uh, before we turn it over to Dr. Borden Kircher? I mean, I know, you know, when we talked with him, we asked that he join. Uh, the meeting today to try to to provide kind of an overview of H L C's perspective now at this point. And what the trustees need to do, uh, because we have the interim uh, report that's due right after the first of the year. So I don't know, Phil, if you have any information you want to add or if we just turn it over to Dr. Borden Kircher.
I think it would be good to just turn it over to him.
Okay.
And thank you very much. And Phil, how long do I have here? Just want to make sure I don't keep anybody by accident um, longer than than we need to.
You know, I think we we kind of uh, thought that we would have um. You know, fifteen, twenty minutes, twenty, you know what? I don't know how much you need, but um. The goal usually with our work sessions is to, you know, be done between six and six thirty. We have another presentation after you're done. So, you know.
Got it. Okay, so I mean, I can.
However, long you think it's going to take, I guess, Doc.
However, long you think it's gonna take, I guess, Dr. Borden Kircher.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that if the board had questions, you know, that that they have an opportunity to ask. Uh, directly to HLC, any kind of questions that they have, I mean, this is this, you know, their relationship with us is important, as you know. Um, and we appreciate the uh membership and the continued support that you provide. Um, I'm very pleased to uh tell everybody that this institution. Um, knocked it out of the park. I, I purposely did not have much communication with the chair ahead of time because. Um, I have been watching the board meetings and there there seem to be some issues in which, you know, some board members had some issues with. What is going on, so I remained silent and um. I wanted to see, you know, whether or not the institution in fact was functioning. Um, with some areas that we would have concern about. Now, mind you, these are nineteen criteria, this is not an easy thing to do. Um, and a good deal, a good portion of of Kansas institutions have some issues that that they have to work on. And uh, so I I waited until I got the draft report. And you know, in many ways, I was, I was really relieved, I was really relieved to see that, in fact. Um, this institution. Is functioning at the highest level of in in my portfolio. I mean, you have to look at how hard that would be to get a fully met criteria. Amongst every single area of teaching and learning. And uh, and Phil, who does a lot of work for us, will tell you that typically, you know, criterion three and four. Um, and some of five become issue iffy, right? Um.
Very much.
Especially, especially a good deal of four. Um, to to not only have, when you read the report. When I first saw it, uh, to not only have. The you know, the criterion met, that's the first place I go, right, just to see. Okay, what was the summary? And then I worked backward and and I read all the detail. Um, there's a lot in there for all of you. To. Stand up and be very proud about, I mean, this community. Has an institution. Um, that this board, by the way, has agreed to through its obligations of membership. To have a peer review team come, who knows nothing about you. Um, come in from a peer perspective. And then not only that, to have an additional twenty people. From all over the country who sit to make the final decision based on what they read. So basically, you had twenty five people. Who said unanimously that there's enough evidence here to support that the institution is doing an amazing job. Um. Then I was disappointed. To see the one section of board performance, because this is, this is an odd thing, I don't see this regularly. And it's nothing that. I didn't talk to you about before. And I feel like uh I was very disappointed, I thought. Things have gotten better, that that everything was fine. And uh, come to find out from a peer review and from the twenty people who looked at the evidence, there was evidence to support. That we have to monitor this, this, this particular area of the criteria and that talks specifically about the board. So, um. It's not a a terribly serious situation, I mean, a monitoring report is a monitoring report. But it just is very disappointing because this could have been knock it out of the park. Complete, fully met. And this has never been an area in the history of this institution, this has never been an area. Um, that has ever been called out in uh by a peer review team. So, that being said, um. You are going to have to work together to respond to the concerns that were brought from your accreditor. Um, fortunately, it's in the nature of a report, the report will be reviewed by a panel. The panel will make its independent decision. I was careful to talk to the team about what are the parameters of this, what were the evidence, the pieces of evidence, I looked at the evidence, I I. I read everything fully. And it's it. It's disappointing. But it also is something that the board can. Um, easily fixed. And uh, the the other issue though is. Um, this is not something that is gonna be the responsibility of the president, it's not gonna be the responsibility of Phil. Um, this is, this is all you. This is going to fall on you, now of course, I'm here to help with what might be. What the team would be, what was suggesting, if you have questions as to. Um, what kinds of things can go into the report? I'm here to help. Um, but it's, it's gonna have to be substantial, simply because this this is not gonna be a report in which you're going to be able to. Tell the truth and say, well, I guess we need training, I gave you the training. I guess we need some consultants. Well, consultants did come. So I think right now the board is is has to sit and and decide what is it that they're going to put into this report that's due no later than. One twelve of twenty twenty four. One twelve of twenty twenty four is gonna creep up quickly. So um, one twelve means that you have holidays. I would suggest you start. Taking this report quite seriously, very, very quickly. Um, one twelve twenty twenty four gives you the opportunity to uh spend some time. To figure out how this report's gonna be structured. And um, and. I want it to and and to reflect. And I will help you with that, to reflect. Uh, best practices in in um. In board behavior and. Um, what we know about and what is expected from the accreditor in terms of how you're going to respond to this. Now. Is this incredibly serious? No, is it, it, will it be public? Yes, it already is public, it's posted. Um, on the website that the institution is under monitoring and and it's under monitoring. What what areas it's under monitoring, it's not serious. Uh, the next level of monitoring. Um, could be a focused visit, which would be unfortunate, but if this report. Um, is not accepted by a peer review team, then that is an option to have to come back. And to uh, to have another review and another look at that. The other option is that they come back and we still haven't ameliorated the issue. Then uh, Phil can explain all the, the the levels that can happen after that, but the first level of sanction would be noticed. Which would also include a follow up visit. To come off of notice, the second level of sanction, of course, is probation, which would be devastating for the institution because. That's when it starts to impact your specialized creditors and. And all the uh, the community that depend on. This institution being in good shape and moving forward. And of course, we also have show cause order, which is not a probation, it's not a uh, notice, it's the next level, which would be the response of the board to say why the institution should. Um, remain accredited, and of course, there's the withdrawal of accreditation. So. I don't think we had to go anywhere there, but I do think we need to spend some time to make sure that this report. Um, is done in a way where. Um, enough evidence is provided to the peer review team who will be doing this as a review. They will not be coming to campus to do this, this will be done um, on reviewers that that we hire. That look at this independently, it's not my decision. Um, it would then. Uh, go to the IAC to for a final action, and then they could remove the monitoring. At the time that they accept the report. Again, if they don't accept the report, then uh, you will be told what will be coming next. And that could be, like I said, in the in the form of a follow up visit. So. Really, 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 really great news, oh my gosh, I can't believe you did as well as you did, it's probably the best this institution has ever done. Um, and it most definitely is at the top tier of all of Kansas. And even with this, you're you're still really up there. Um, but if we get rid of this. Then then truly you're at, you're at the top of accreditation, there's absolutely no question, and this is not easy to do. So. Um, I wanna make sure everyone's crystal clear on what it is that has to be done from here. Um, but it. It is not a issue of the president, it's not an issue of Phil, it's not an issue of the faculty. This uh is an issue of the board, and the board alone must address the issues. Um, that are outlined in the summary statement that was provided to you. So, let's open it up for discussion, questions, how can I help you? With this, cuz we are here to help, but this is not a report that any of us can do, and and me especially, of course, I couldn't, but. Um, but this is not a report that that Kim can provide and or or Phil.
I can go, but I'm gonna need about five minutes, this is Shelby Smith. I think I have the resolution to it already, uh, your report on core component two C. I take a little bit of umbrage at the very bottom, page twenty two says the board is unwilling to work to find effective ways of interacting in public meetings. We do Robert's rules, we try to do procedural stuff. We are not unwilling to find effective ways of interacting, we might be rude occasionally. And people are kinda a-holes to each other on both sides of the aisle, but we are not. Unwilling to find effective, that that's not a true statement. Uh. It seems the board is not considering the best institute, at best entrance, interest of the institution on page twenty three. I don't believe that's right either, I've asked for three and a half years first court's data. And we finally got it this year after three and a half years of me asking. And also. Cable's numbers last year. Butler, our five year average of loss of students is the highest of any community college in the state. That's very concerning to me as a minority member, we're simply trying to find out what's what, make adjustments, and we're being pushed back upon. At every level, and I think the resolution to skip to the end. Uh, interim monitoring if possible, the report should affirm board members understand the limits of their roles and appropriate roles of presidents and administration. Uh, they can ex- with, and we could submit an updated thing, we've, I've said this for two years, we've got a code of conduct thing on the wall. That has two lines in it that I will not sign, saying that I have to speak. In a specific way and support policies that even if I vote against them, I have to show solidarity and full heartedly support it in public. That goes against my freedom of speech, I made two. Two slight modifications to that court of conduct thing and sent it to the trustees today. Simply stating that we would abide by the the uh constitution of the state of Kansas and the United States. And that I will publicly affirm the majority decision of the board constitutes the the policy of the college. A hundred percent, a board, we act as a majority, we do not act. I mean, it shows delineation of power between the president and the board, all that's in it, I mean, it's, we need two slight changes. And I think all that goes away, we can all agree to that. And the only thing. Wallet Hub just came out with a rankings of Butler, we're five twenty one out of six sixty eight nationally. And we're sixteenth out of eighteenth in Kansas. I don't think that's terribly acceptable, I think we need to find out how we can go about turning that around as well. Uh. There's one part in here that says the uh. Believe that individual members of the boards are overstepping our. They're attempting an influence curriculum and a bridge academic freedom. I think that's taken a little out of context, like there was an issue that we tried to address. But the board hires the president, the president. Sets a lot of that stuff, so in in effect, the board could hire a different president with different philosophy. And we could affect the philosophy or the. The culture of the college by who we choose to hire as a president, the board does have that power, we're not trying to do that right this second. But the board ultimately does have that power. And the required action just says this report should affirm the board members understand the limits of their roles. And the appropriate role for the president administration, I think if we sign. This with the two modifications would be done and done. And the other thing. I was on a train ride in Alaska. And we had a president from the O show, sorry, do I need to pause or can I just ramble, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm just talking, yeah. Okay, anyway, he mentioned there's a document that addresses trustees like me and Julie Winslow, it's called the Rogue Trustee, I found it, copy this off. Read all ninety pages and. Dr. Kroll has done all of this by the board, she's done everything she should to control us, to change our bylaws, to take. Uh. You know, use the lawyer against us, use HLC. Threats of HLC. And uh, I've got a couple of highlights in here, it's just. There's a part in here was says that if the president chooses to use the HLC cudgel and threaten us. To just to try to control the trustees, it's something that could backfire, I mean, she could win the. Win the war or win the fight and lose the war, it's like, I don't think it's helpful. To try to uh, it's a. Says it's a high risk for the president, using accrediting body to identify poor leadership and inappropriate behavior. Uh. I can come back to it if somebody else wants to talk.
You're doing good, I'll give you.
Let me, let me just respond, Shelby, I hear what you're saying, first of all, you're. I I'm not here to talk about the report, the report's done, it's over, it's gone. The report is not what you should be looking at, what is public and available to everybody is that you have to write. A report that affirms that the board members understand the limits and their roles and appropriate role for president and administration. Everything that you have said does not convince me that you understand what you have to do, I I think you're arguing the fact that you're saying that we're threatening. That the president is doing something, I I think it's very simple here. It's going to be up to you and the rest of the board to figure out. How you're going to address to your institutional accreditor for the US Department of Education in the United States of America. How you are functioning effectively. And if you believe that that's what's going to be what you're going to do, I can't tell you if it will be accepted or not, that's that that's your choice. I'm just here to let you know, if you would like my help rather than argue with me about the report. There's a lot of stuff in here probably that could be wrong, these are three people, these are what, five people who spend a. Bunch of time that that's a peer review. Is at the end of the day, the IAC who makes the decision has upheld it. And they haven't upheld the report, they upheld what they gave in writing for you to do.
Right, the resolution.
I hear what you're saying, I mean, I I understand that, and I'm not here to support the president. I may, I may like what she does, I may not like what she does, I, you're in control of the president, you're in control of the institution. I'm just saying here that I want. I I wanna be able to help you get rid of this monitoring. Um, and to provide a report. Um, that that truly reflects the fact that. That you understand what these people saw when they came, that you understand what HLC is asking you to do. Um, and none of which that you're concerned about, I I think is is a problem for you to. Um, to worry about for HLC and and to write to this. Um, it's. There's some accusations in there that I agree, I would be like, I would take, I would take offense to or umbridge, that's fine, somebody's opinion.
But you guys were presented slivers of information and specific meetings of time to make us trustees look bad, which I understand. But we've been met with every, I mean. You can read, you know, the rogue trustee, it's it's bullet point by bullet point what's been done to us, you know. But but our our affirmation of service and standards is a good practice, it completes what you're asking of us a hundred percent. I will honor the division of responsibility between the board and the president and staff. I'll contribute to creating a spirit of troop operation, mutually supportive relationship with the present staff and order of our community. It's it's, it does all of that, I'll prepare participate in open, honest civil discussion. I mean, this is something we could have had signed two years ago if we had just tweaked it slightly instead of forcing the board to march in lockstep in support. With the majority, you we can't, you can't force the minority to say that they support the ma- majority in public, I mean, that's, that's a bridge too far and. But I think. I don't know, maybe we could send you an email of this and see if, does that satisfy, we have to write a book report, or can we simply report that this is our. Affirmation of service and standards and good practice. We all affirm this. I mean, I think it could be that simple, I could be mistaken for sure.
I I. I I I I. You and I'm here to help, but I certainly don't wanna give you advice, you know, that could lead you astray because this is something that really the board has to take on. Um, I can, I can get some opinions on it. I can, I can get some opinions on it internally with my peers as well. If you have a draft that you'd like to show us, that, that's something I could do. Um, but just take it for what it's worth. I'm not, I'm not the one that makes a decision on this. Um, it does go to a peer review and I just want to make sure that whatever it is you give, you know, really ameliorates the, the issue that we have.
And I'm sorry, if I could speak uh, for just a second. So, even though we could come to consensus on signing that information, it goes beyond that. And one of the things that's in here, it says if we, it might be beneficial to reconvene a visioning session so the administration can be provided a consensus picture of the board's expect, expectations for the direction of the college. Just a meeting or so ago, we talked about instead of bringing up uh, specific issues, you know, to have a comprehensive plan for where we wanted to go for, for us to understand completely what is expected by all in reference to budget and things like that in not to keep looking at things and saying, well, we'll cut this or we'll not cut that and so forth, but comprehensively to look at the dollars that are being spent, which is one of the big issues here and the desire to, everyone has the desire to see taxes lower. It's just that we want a sustainable process to do that, not just here and there, not just threatening to take a part of somebody's pay increase out of the blue and, and all the things that are causing the conflict between all of us. But we've got to come and vision and try to come to some agreement with what we want to see moving forward. So there's a clear picture to the administration of what our expectation is. So that's what I have to say.
Asked tonight also maybe in next month's work session, if we could have some of the VPs and other people address like, hey, how do we turn the declining enrollment around and get their ideas bounced off of us and not just.
So it's enrollment, money.
Right. But it asks the people in their departments, like, what would be a good idea, at least hear their ideas.
But I think we have to, to be committed to do some of the other work. It isn't, I mean, things could go on forever with a four-two vote, but we can't be having an attitude that comes from here that makes our staff weary of coming to face us and things like that. I, I think that that's a terrible precedent. I think people feel that way. And I just would hope that we can get together and figure some of this stuff out.
I would argue that everything is rosy behind the scenes and all they, they've read us trustees. We've had an awful lot of beings take on new jobs lately that we don't hear about or get to talk to them that they leave. However, it's not. We don't have to agree seven oh on all the votes. We all have to get along. We can be professional and cordial, but still stern. I think we're all trying to turn the institution around. You can't argue we're going in the best direction currently. It's a terrible direction currently. Let's just put everything on the table and be adults and talk about it. But I just feel constantly threatened for the last three and a half years of HLC. And now you see, you know, the.
Well, but HLC has power. It has power over federal funding.
I understand.
And it's the same way with.
But at the end of the day, if they want to suspend our accreditation because three of us disagree in a rude manner, okay, let's find out if that's true and poor, but I don't, I don't think you can just threaten me because I disagree with the majority decision.
That's not what this, but that Shelby.
I don't know that they're saying that.
No, that, that's not what this says. It, it, it doesn't say that at all. And that's of course not what we would ever do. We're a membership organization. I mean, I really commend the fact that you want to turn the ship around and you are concerned about the direction it's going. I, I wish I had a lot of schools who, that kind of energy. This is great. I am, Shelby, I am not about to tell you to stop doing that and makes thing, and make it better. I also do want you to, to at least recognize that that you have an accreditor, an institutional accreditor that came in and gave you an outstanding report. I know that there's things you, you think you need to work on, but from an accreditation standpoint, you're doing a really, really great job.
I understand that, but I'm also doing a terrible job in loss of students. And yeah, we can all write, each department can write their own book report that the other community college presidents come and read and say, your report, you did what you said in your report. Good job. High five. But still we're in such decline. I need, I need, the one thing I was looking in here, uh, there's a major risk involved for presidents to engage in the accrediting commissions and examining governance issues in their institutions. Not only will the colleges be exposed locally and nationally for the problems, there could be retributions from the rogue trustees and his or her allies. One case reported here, blah, 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 it says. Anyway, it's just what I said earlier, you can win the battle and control your trustees, but lose the war. Like, I don't, I don't appreciate that being on our good name. Because you guys are presented the fact that, and we've done a lot of, a lot of training and, and we've had some trainers that say, hey, you guys are in the right. And I mean, you said three and a half years ago. Yeah. Dr. Kroll has to tell you the information, even though she doesn't want to without a story. So then here we are, you know, three years later before we get sports data and it's like, I'm not getting it.
Well, I, I'll let you all work out that amongst yourselves, but just know that it, this has nothing to do with the fact of, of Kim or, or, you know, Dr. Kroll coming in and, and putting HLC. That this was an independent decision. This had nothing to do with her. Um, and, and I think there was just concern from this peer review team about the very thing that Forrest talked about. And if we could at least get to something where we could all agree, um, and it sounded Shelby, like you wanted to go to that space.
Yeah. I sent it to, I, I've asked for it for two years, but there's an unwillingness on the other side to move our direction. But if you read the bottom where it says required action, is that, is that what is required from a simply what it says is required on the interim report?
Yes.
So that's all we need to do and that's what we need to focus on.
Yes. It's finding and, and, and putting it into the report. Of course, the report should, you know, have some level of evidence attached to it. So it's not just, you know, it does, it, did everybody agree to this? Did we all sign on to that? Um, you know, what pieces of evidence can we add to this report to let the peer review team know that, you know, we, we really are giving this the best shot we got.
Or just said, we have to affirm that the board members understand the limits of our roles, which we all agree the limits of our roles. We hire the president. She runs the date today. We have no power among ourselves individually. We only act as a group. We can't even vote without a forum. We all agree to that. And the appropriate role for the president and administrator. I don't think any of us disagree with that. It was just a little bit of a verbiage on the, and I think if that standard was signed, that would be a document that completely fulfills that without writing a report about it. It would say, I mean, we obviously understand it. We're adults. And we understand the delineation of power between the board and the administration. I don't, and we've made board, I mean, if you guys look through the accreditation, we had a censure vote for trustee Winslow. We had a censure vote for the chair. Cause there was, you know, some possible board violation. We've done lots of work as a board. And I think we all do understand this. It's just, we don't have anything in writing that states such.
Well, then now's the time to put it in writing.
Okay. To me, that's what it seems like.
Yeah.
Well, I also think that, and how are we moving forward? You need, I mean, that has to be a part of it too. Doesn't it?
That's not a part of what he's, is written here. Well.
Dr. Borden Kurtcher.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I've got a question, I think that might synthesize maybe what Shelby's saying and, and what Linda said. Clearly the, the team found.
I, I thought it was Forrest. That's Forrest. I'm, I apologize.
No, no worries, no worries. Um, so it's, it seems clear to me where there's deflection going on right now, trying to defend what happened. All those issues aside, the board found the HLC, the team found that board members had engaged in behaviors that were inconsistent with the expectations for how we're supposed to conduct ourselves. And I'm not trying to, to point fingers at who did what when. But I think what Shelby's asking is, is it sufficient if those that have engaged in misbehavior do nothing more than simply say, I won't do it again. Because that's sort of all you're doing by signing it, by signing an attestation. That's all you're saying is, I understand what's expected of me and I promise to comply, even though clearly for the last three and a half years, members of the board have engaged in behaviors that aren't consistent with what the expectations are.
Right. So, so we get back to where we were before. So if in fact, you know, you do sign this document and we send it in and it looks great and it was accepted. But then we go right back to where we were before. Then, you know, we're, we haven't made any progress. And that's going to impact going forward because this was something that was already identified. And if it starts to deteriorate again, then we have to come back in.
Could you clarify that statement? Go back to where we were. This simply sets, states that we should affirm board members understand the limits of their roles and appropriate role for the president administration doesn't state anything more than we have to understand and affirm that.
Well, affirming is, is, is a high bar. Affirming means you will agree to do that, whatever it is you're agreeing to do. If you do not agree to do that, or if you say that you're going to do it and then find out later that you're not doing it, then we're right back to where we were before.
But it simply states that we understand our limits and the role of the president. If we, we can still understand our limits and disagree.
You can disagree.
And if I'm stonewalled by the administration, in my job as a trustee, I think I'm within my rights to make a phone call to get some information out of a vendor or whatever. I've done that before and it's out of the chain of command, but I thought the information was important. I can't give up all.
Something, if you've affirmed that you won't do that, then you can't do it in the future. But if, if all of you have affirmed that that's okay to do, then, then I'm not going to tell you, you can't do it. I mean, it's your own stuff that you have to make up here. You have to all agree that this is, this is how we're going to operate together as a, as a group. Much like.
We have, if I can say a couple of things here, we have a board majority right now that is very adamant. Okay. I don't know what other word to use. Um, we would like to work as a, as a board together. But there does seem to be a delineation between the minority and the majority as far as how they're treated and dealt with on the board, which is kind of a shame. So maybe one of the things we should think about is changing the president every month. I mean, anything to build a more cohesive relationship amongst all of us. And that's what I want to. I want everyone to be able to explain their point of view and not be laughed at, made fun of, or snarled at during the meeting just because they have an opinion. And I don't really want to be the minority anymore. I want to be part of the board. I don't want those clear definitions. And I think that's going to have to start with a uh, a leadership and you can put whatever name in there you want, whether it's the president of the college or the president of the board or the president of the academics or, or even of the professional association. I think it has to start with whatever leadership is what over this board, for instance, that will demand that equal equal, I guess, opportunity for all board members. But there are some things that I agree with Shelby on that I cannot, I cannot sign up. I mean, I, I don't mind backing a board decision in public, you know, yeah, we voted for that. But in private, if I'm asked if I support that, I will not say that I do. If I don't, I just, that would interfere with my, my free speech, but we have a lot of crises right now that you're not really probably aware of, and I just want to fix them. And it's really hard when we have so much infighting going on. You know, between the administration, between the board, between certain members of the board, so forth and so on. So, and the rules change quite frequently. The rules change depending on who's in charge. Does that make sense to you? And I don't want that either. I just want an equitable uh, application of all bylaws, applicable, app, application of all meeting protocols. Does that make sense? And if we don't have that and no one will enforce that, then it's just compounding the problem. I hope you can understand what I'm saying without trying to be ugly.
So how would you respond? I mean, just out of curiosity, because I didn't know there was this much disharmony in the board. This, this did not come up before as much. So now that we're openly talking about it. Um, so, so how, how?
I don't think it's necessary to have this much disharmony. I just don't. I don't think it is.
How would you, what needs to be written to us? What, what would you say is, what, what do you think would work in this particular situation so that at least we get the monitoring off of the institution?
Well, the monitoring has nothing to do with our um, approval as far as our, um, ability to keep going and so forth and our, you know, you just gave us a really glowing report academically. That's wonderful. That's what we were after. You really don't have any say over the board itself, but I can tell you as a board member what I would like to see different. But that doesn't mean I'm not going to get attacked on the way to the parking lot, because I probably will. So I just want to see more equal application and, uh, I don't, I don't want to be badgered because I have an opinion or I just don't want that. It's just not necessary. We are all adults here and it's disgusting that we act like this. And I, I just absolutely hate it. I've never, I've been on five, six different boards. It's never been this way anywhere else, but it's like, if you're over the line on this side, then you just get attacked. You get attacked and they, they all wield their big hammers, whether the hammer is the board president or the hammer, the college president or the hammer is, is, uh, it could be anybody. It could be me. I mean, I'm just saying, and it's just, it's, it's just not right. We, we want the college to continue above all, but there are so many facets of making that continuum exist. And you've got to be able to hear all of those. You can't just say, well, I'm only going to hear it from this side and that's it. And that's what I feel is happening a lot. So anyway, I hope I didn't mix it up too much by trying to be ultra complimentary when I was just trying to make you understand that there's a lot of problems here. And one of the things that I think might be effective is literally changing the president every single month. So that there's none of this.
The chair?
Yes, the chair. Sorry. I'm sorry, Kim. I didn't mean that on Kim. I meant the board, the board president, you know, every month, just because it might be more fair. By the time they learn, it'll be time to go to the next person. You see what I'm saying? I mean, I'm just desperately trying to figure out how to make the cohesiveness. You asked me what I would do. That is the absolute number one thing I would do is change out that board president every single month so that we will, we aren't, um, there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes. I don't even want to go into. And, and I don't care about that. What I care about is let's move forward with the college. Let's keep it open. Let's improve our, our enrollment and, and let's listen instead of just shutting them down and, and, and going by the Bible that I feel like our president has gone by at the college, and that's the rogue trustee, which is very.
Are you saying the Bible's kind of a wrong road to go down?
I'm saying that the rogue trustee, i- if every single thing that has happened to the minority board members is absolutely out of that book. I've read it. It's absolutely out of book and we didn't even know it existed until about six months after we got on the board and another board member from Johnson County Community College actually brought it to our attention and said the year before, this was all at the National Association of, of, um, what do they call that? ACCT, whatever. So, and, and this book was given out and boy, everything is verbatim. Don't give your trustee information. They're dangerous. They're touched in the head. I mean, there's just all kinds of accusations in there that are incredible. So, that being said, you asked me what I would do first. That is the first thing I would do. And as far as that role, I would rotate all of them out. I think it would make us be forced to be more cohesive and I really think that board leadership is the key to the cohesiveness of the board. Having been on several, I really feel like I'm qualified to say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're at six o'clock and I will say that I think from our discussion. So, we're at six o'clock and I will say that I think from our discussion, I've heard three things. I'm going to ask if you guys have anything else, but. I think that once again, we've talked before and we had some training. We talked about using Robert's Rules of Order. Might be nice to have somebody come in that was an expert that would go through those with us again and help us. To establish a process where everyone has an equal right to make their comments. Um, I think that visioning for us as a group, whether it's financial or what we want to see happening or changes. Um, enrollment, things like that is something that we could do as a board and give our instructions to lead to the. Uh, staff and to Dr. Kroll and then leadership. What, you know, not everyone wants to be the leader, so. But there are some different things about leaders that I think we could learn and possibly try to embrace that. Um, so are there other things that you think we should be working towards? Not that we can do it all at once, but are there other things you'd like to see?
The thing I see is just finding an agreement that we can all agree on with, like we did with your. Your taking complaints the other day. We modified it. We all agreed to it. Boom, boom. You weren't here. I mean, that's now board policy. It's just simple. Some people are sticklers on the language and we're not going to do a blanket statement. So what, I'll redo everything even though there could possibly be any. Possibly, I need a little wiggle room, you know? But I would. I don't know how to address this, but. We as the minority members, a lot of the majority members have been. Asked to run by Dr. Cole, friendly with Dr. Cole, and then we get here and it's.
What do you mean asked to run by me?
Your presidential report in twenty nineteen, you stated you specifically asked. Mary Martha and Forrest to run for the board. It's, it's in on the website.
And it's in there. I've seen it.
But I mean, it's, so we get to the point where, you know, trustees are asked to run by the president. And then trustees back the presidents. You know, what she presents to us and it's like, it's a little bit.
It's not what we're here for.
And that's not what I'm saying. It's just. It makes it hard for us, you know, we're disagreeing with the majority, but the majority was also asked to be here at the behest of. The president, so it's. We have to be able to disagree if we just, what the policy I would like to have just in general. Agree to disagree. Let's take our votes. What our majority votes for, that's the policy of the college. Minority has their say, majority has their say. We vote up or down, drive on to the next issue. I think that's what.
Well, the problem Shelby is that, that hasn't been what's happened. And, and the sense I got from your questions to Dr. Borden Kircher were, I want to affirm this. But if I decide that it's not right, I'm going to deviate from it. And that's been your course of behavior for the last three and a half, half years. You've justified everything you've done that's been against the policy and you've rationalized it away in your head as to why it was okay to do it. But that. That doesn't get us the next, that doesn't make the next step forward.
The policy that.
And to suggest that, and to suggest that I ran because. I mean, if you think there's some great financial gain for being a community college trustee, you know better.
I never intuited that. I just simply stated, Dr. Kroll stated in public that she asked you and Mary Martha to run. Because as two.
Because there was no one running for my district. Because the district was going to be vacant and no one was running for it.
I didn't say what the data was. I just said that she specifically asked you.
But you're suggesting that I'm somehow biased. That's part of the problem.
I didn't say there's any, anything. I'm not rambling. I just made a specific sense. I didn't suggest anything. I just simply said it's a statement. And we can't just.
Then what point, if there was no, if there was no meaning to it, then what was the point of your statement?
Let the president presents her ideas to trustees that were asked to run for this position by her. And then some of the trustees that weren't asked to run by her have opposing views. Were minority, that's a minority view. We don't have, it's not the policy of the college. That's all I'm saying.
Then just own it Shelby, you're saying I'm biased. Just own it.
This is what I'm talking about right here.
I'm, I'm not saying you're biased. I'm just saying you were asked by the president to run. There are people currently running that were asked by the administration to run against. It is what it is. If you have a majority, you have the right to vote as you please and that's the policy of the college. I'm just simply pointing out the fact.
Okay, let's, maybe could we table this till our next work session, please?
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll put that on the list too. Anything else?
I was going to mention the policy of taking complaints was changed December tenth of twenty nineteen. The month before we took office. I mean, there was a lot of changes to the board bylaws. Specifically in regards to the trustees, passing a little more power to the president and the board.
Do we need to look at the bylaws again?
No, no, I mean, it was changed by majority. They're not going to change now. I'm just saying it was changed soon as the board's starting to get some opposing members in. And the consolidated power more towards the administration than the board. And then now, it can't just be a one-way street where the, the board can't ask for information. If the administration doesn't want to provide it. I think we're fighting at the end of the day for the same goal, like the success of the college. We come about in different ways. And I would just like when we came on Butler was act on fact, act on fact. I just want to see all the data and let's talk about it.
Um, so back, that goes back to us visioning. I think we could resolve then.
And the one point.
Our goals are.
To be careful with, even in the, even in the rogue trustee, it says. A rogue trustee does not learn to be a better trustee from trustee meetings and workshops. They use. They learn to use and exploit the culture and the terminology and the protocols. The more trustee workshops they attend, the better they are at being a rogue trustee.
Would they work off what? I'm sorry.
The more workshops we go to, the worse we are to deal with as the opposing trustees, because now I know more Robert's rules, I know.
But if we vision as a group collectively and in good faith. That's not doing any more than expressing what our contentions are. And as a group, and when you say minority, in the report, I said to Kim. At our last meeting, minority doesn't mean the four-three vote. They're just saying that some members, they're not saying. It's just because you vote yes or you vote no, but. I mean, I get frustrated like everyone else, but I would be willing to come to the table and. Set some goals and set some things that we want to accomplish and. Try to follow those guidelines so that we get some things accomplished and. It sounds like enrollment is another. Issue and what we can do. And so I have Robert's rules really for myself. More because I don't know them real well. Uh, some type of visioning for us. Leadership, I, I'd like to, you know, talk about some leadership principles, the agreement that you've made some suggestions on. If we have bylaw things, how do we improve enrollment? And really I think budget management is another. Overall budget management that isn't just one thing at a time, but cohesive. What are we trying to get? What are we trying to accomplish?
I would like to see the board as a group. As I guess the majority of the board, what direction?
Right.
Are we happy with the way everything's going? What do we think about this and that? Just a brief discussion of ideas and. I think that would be good with the. VPs and everyone have.
Linda, one thing I'd like you to put on that next work session is, I, I would very much like for everyone. To review the original charter of this college and what it was for. And then I want to review it as of twenty. Ten? And then again, as of twenty twenty. I, because I think we have totally gotten away with, from the original purpose of this college.
Um, so with long lists like this, we're not. So, but if we will work towards these, if you are in agreement.
I think specifically.
Things you'd prefer.
I think that's a heck of a start.
I think specifically we need to address the statement of affirmation that we understand the combination of powers between the president and the board.
Yeah, I think it would be a huge.
The H L T two requirements that they state we need to do, we need to get that done as soon as possible.
You may not want to look at the original charter because it was El Dorado Junior College. And that may only include the, the citizens of El Dorado and it may not include the citizens of Butler County.
I'm interested in seeing the original chart.
I, I was just going to say that I think, you know, even if we go back to the original thing that's hanging on the wall that hasn't been signed. Step one, just put a document together that everyone can sign. This can't be that hard, you know? And, and that's. That's got to be at least a step one in the right direction and to just illustrate, hey, we can all seven get on the same page about something, you know? And then hopefully build from there.
Maybe we could dissect it. You know, section one, everybody agrees on section two.
I think we're nitpicking over, over semantics and.
And it does need some punctuation. I don't know the difference between colon, semicolon, but it's just. It's dealer's choice on that document. There's like double commas.
Okay, so in September work session, we will try to work through the affirmation agreement first. We can go from there if we're going to have time. Okay. So now, um, we appreciate the help of Dr. Borden Kircher.
Any, any closing thoughts, Dr. Borden Kircher from you?
Yeah, and you know, you can always call me Tom. We, we've been through this, you know. All together for a while now and you're one of my institutions I've had since I started. You know, Linda, I think that a lot of what you just talked about. Um, and I think, you know, Shelby hinted to it. That's probably a good start for the document that you would be giving to us. Um, and, and specifically when you talked about the Robert's Rules of Borders, the, the visioning. That, that kind of affirmation work. That, you know, because we can't tell you what to do and, and how to do it. But we want the board to function well. Um, because it's doing well and it, and Shelby wants it to do better and I agree. But I think. I, I think what's important here is. If we could show the peer review team at H L C that you have some things that you all agree on. And that you're moving forward in that direction. So that when we check back with you, we can see how is it going.
And part of the things, we'll have to have some kind of measurement to them and be defined. Uh, according to that, according to our vision and expectations, so we'll have to work on that too.
I, I've got one quick question to the board.
Dave.
I have a friend who recently moved to Wichita from the Phoenix area. Who is a corporate trainer, corporate leader type person who works with many. Fortune five hundred companies. And. I could have him maybe look at some historical data and then come to us with maybe. Uh, something from a corporate point of view, if that would be. Uh, I know we get lots of training and sometimes you feel it's all from an education point of view. But, uh, this guy does lots of work with corporations. Um, he just got back from the San Jose area working with Cisco. And works with Microsoft and works with a lot of other. Um, and goes to Washington DC quite a bit, um. Working on the business and so if that's. If that's something you guys might be interested in in a work session, kind of training session.
I think that might be a really good idea. I was reading in the Board Effect publication. I follow that quite a bit. How the institutions that are the, the. Like the schools or pro, not for, not for profit organizations are starting to move. A, a little bit away from automatically. Following leadership of the CEO or whatever and becoming more involved, becoming more involved as boards. So.
So do you want me to?
Yeah, so I think that's a good idea.
Let's wait until we figure out what we do and don't know about.
I was just bringing it up as an idea.
Well, it's, it would be a resource. Okay, six fifteen, um, or six fourteen. So can we move on to our.
Thanks, thank you. We'll be in touch.
Hang in there all, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last, I think we have a presentation by Kelly.
Yeah.
And that is, what do you have?
Uh, well, I don't know what I have. That's what I was wondering.
I might need another one. I think I just stuffed it in all my other papers.
Board effect publication.
Yeah, Julie gave that to you, I think, didn't she? Yeah, I, I gave it to you because it does reiterate that.
Oh, you're just giving it to me.
Do you guys like to copy what I made, printed form? I've got one for Dr. Cole.
There's some snacks in the back room, so before we leave, we've got some cheese and crackers and some things like that.
That's nice. I wasn't expecting that because it's. Not our regular board.
Well. She just gave it to me.
Good evening.
Well, no, she, she just gave it to me.
Oh, you can look at it. Oh, no, I didn't. I thought, I thought somebody passed it out.
No, well, that's what I was wondering.
Attention today.
Sorry, sorry.
Good evening. I, um, I won't be nearly as long as I was in March when I visited with. Um, I'm here to talk tonight about the advertising dollars. And, um, first, before we get into that, this presentation you're seeing, it may look like the one you saw last time, but it's not. It's shorter and I just did change out, change out photos. So, um, first of all, um, that the purpose, I just wanted to highlight again that marketing is to grow brand awareness, lead generation. And reputation among our target populations. And we're of course going to talk workforce training and. And educational opportunities to drive inquiries and prospects. And, um, you can scroll again, Jennifer. Thanks. And this is, I just wanted, um, before we get, oh. That's the old one. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, it's okay. It's all right. It'll work. Um. I wanted to give a little history about the, about the marketing department kind of overall. And back in the nineteen nineties, I started with the college and we were a very small little department and I was here for fourteen years. Spent nine of those years as the marketing director before I left in two thousand and five. And that was back in a time where you didn't have, I mean, the websites were there, uh, they were. Now you're not necessarily huge monsters. You didn't have a lot of the social media advertising that was going on. The direct marketing automation, those technologies out there. Um, when I came back then, well, also during that time, the. The competition in that whole area started to really grow and shift and change too. So when I was at Newman. Um, the college decided to pretty much in a single day, walk away from the marketing department. And decimate it and they left one person here and they put that person over into student services. And the college began to feel the effects of that. And so I was hired, I returned to the college, um, in twenty fourteen. Um. To rebuild the institution and to rebuild the institution's marketing department. And as part of that, then to also look at the different job roles, because the, uh, marketing departments and our technologies, uh, we have to relearn our jobs. Uh, I know IT says about every ninety days, we have to learn, relearn our jobs a lot too, because of the technologies that are constantly changing. Um, that we have to learn and figure out how to do our super stalker stuff. Um, but I wanted to kind of give you a, a history of that because when I did come back then. They moved the person back over from student services and we had zero processes. There were press release templates. If I would have had to put a press release out, we didn't have a list of the. Um. The current media representatives that we would be wanting to connect with. Um, this definitely hurts brand awareness. It hurts, it hurts the presence of, and the visual presence of the institution. So with that, um, it's taken us about a decade to get where we are today. Which I'm very grateful for and I have my hand out here. Um, I wanted to talk then with the advances that, um. Kind of the enhancements that. That the board approved last year. And that really came down to, um. Three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that was added into the college's, um. Marketing budget. And what I've tried to do here is kind of, is, um, trying to show you the, a visual of where those dollars went and. And how we utilize them. Uh, back when we were asking for those dollars and then also in March, um, it was, it's all about digital and that is where the bulk of the, um. The bulk of the presentation or the, the bulk of the money went into is, um. Is digital. So you'll be looking at this. So you see radio, we didn't really, uh, radio was pretty much, um, fairly funded from the original existing budget. And then billboards, we increased fifteen point thirty-eight percent. Um, print eleven, uh, point one five percent. Print, uh, we just said that one, traditional TV eleven point eight seven percent and then of the digital. Um, platforms received just over sixty percent of that additional, of those additional dollars. And I know there's a lot of. And I know there's a lot of confusion when I say digital platforms. There are many different ways and uh digital avenues out there for us to utilize. And so OTT is the is streaming television. That I have a new listed there. Because that was a a big first time investment. We had dabbled in it and literally just like barely over two thousand dollars. Maybe we hadn't done much, I don't think with it. Um, but for this, it was a much bigger investment. And new with two point four million impressions that we've got off of that. So we were very pleased with that. Twitch Reddit and Amazon are also new. They were kind of experiments for us. We hadn't done anything in that regard before. Wanted to kind of see how those audiences move and what might uh get those thumbs to click and get them into our website. Um, I was personally kind of excited about this because uh I had my twenty-somethings, my two sons and their significant others over. And uh, they said, Mom, I saw you on Reddit. And then somebody else goes, yeah, and I saw you on my Twitch. And I was like, sweet. But uh, total impressions with that was over um eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand impressions with over three thousand clicks. And the video pre-roll, I thought that's a completion rate, which means that they actually watched the entire video. And that had over a ninety-six percent completion rate, which um was was pretty good. YouTube, Google, you can see there, I won't necessarily read all of these to you, but um I'm very excited about what YouTube. And uh what we're doing with YouTube and Google, over two thousand percent increase on conversions. More than five hundred and eleven percent increase on YouTube subscribers. And our impressions that we're also up with for YouTube, um sixty-four, more than sixty-four percent. Snapchat um got a nice boost. And it enhanced our reach. We'd been doing sub Snapchat and we were inconsistent. And so we were able to add budget there. And we had a twenty-six hundred uh two thousand six hundred and sixty-seven point one seven percent. Increase in the clicks through on Snapchat. Pandora and Spotify, I I included those as digital platforms. They're streaming radio. Uh, they're certainly, they're not necessarily, you know. Maybe now you almost call them traditional radio, right? Um, they've been around a while, but we had been very inconsistent. Uh, with Spotify and Pandora and the budgets were pretty thin. So um. We slid somebody over there to make us just more consistent and regular regularly out there. Um, the Wichita Business Journal inter scroll or just, it's just a an additional growth with the Wichita. Wichita Business Journal, the bulk of that budget is actually listed in the print statistics there. But I wanted to give a shout out on the inner scroll. We had forty-five thousand impressions. That was new for us to do this digital platform with them. Over the course of two months. And with Meta, which is Facebook and Instagram. Again, over twelve hundred percent increase, one thousand two hundred and thirty-one percent increase. In impressions with those platforms. Um, niche, uh, I don't have it listed necessarily. It would have had some existing dollars because I'm also reallocating all the time. And niche is a college search platform and it is um something we had never done before. So we had a free profile listed out there. And um. It it ended up costing us just under twenty thousand and it's new, but as of July thirty-first. We had received just under two hundred new prospects into our um lead pool. So that I I didn't really know what to expect with that. Um, but I was uh excited to see that. So I went ahead and listed that for you here also. Overall then, which. We've got the traditional stuff listed at the top, and that's why I said there that it drives brand awareness. Um, because these other things down at the bottom, overall brand synergy, the landing page views that we've had on our website, they're up four hundred and forty-two. Percent. Plus a little form fills, we'd have, we've had a seventeen point five seven percent increase. Um, webpage fill, uh webpage views, they are up eighteen percent. With um more than eight hundred and ninety-three thousand. Four hundred and eight webpage views. New users are up twenty-nine percent with more than two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight web users. Overall traffic, when you combine all of the, all of the things there, it's one point three million in more page view sessions and new users. And then, as I mentioned in March, we do have an act on platform. Now, that was already purchased as an existing budget. I don't want to. Confuse you on that point, but I did want to mention that we're constantly nurturing uh more than forty-five thousand leads. That have come into that system over the last three years. And just fun little, uh, we did, we we didn't do anything with TikTok. Kind of no advertising. Um, and then we cut Facebook and Instagram. And still had that. Uh, the increase up there, which I feel like that is a shout out to the staff and how they're watching those numbers and Sarah's doing a good job. Uh, we didn't lose anything. We cut them, still gained a great mo uh momentum there. And but then that's what helped us on the YouTube. And Snapchat, too. We slid money over there. Um, so I wanted to highlight that. And let's see, did want to mention also with the increase um that we received last year. Um, HubSpot recommends that in the education vertical, um, close to like a three percent total budget of your of your overall budget for education. Uh, marketing. And right now we're about one point two eight. And I'm not asking for any more money. I'm thrilled with thrilled with my positions and thrilled with the budget we've been able to place so far. Um, the only, the other slide I had and it's and it's actually on here, Jennifer, was the funnel. I was just gonna re emphasize the funnel. Again, and how everything we do, we try to, we try to drive those inquiries at the top of the funnel. So that we can at least get a name or a phone number, an email. And then through digital avenues, we try to support uh student services through nurturing them into that next. Full-blown application stage. Um, the marketing goals, and they're going to be on there, too, Jennifer, if you want to scroll down. These are the goals for. Uh, keep going, keep going. Yep, yep. See, I've cut out a lot. I think those are initiatives, right? Yeah, here you go. This one. Yep. Marketing plan goals. And really tonight, we're talking about number two, three and four that are listed there in front of you, getting into those inquiries and leads. Um, one thing that we are trying to do as a department with the staff that we have. And the data that we're now able to really study and dive deeper into. We are really trying to position ourselves to be more react, uh more proactive rather than reactive. Um, so that we can analyze our re our financial resources and the staff and really kind of. Understand where do we need to spend our time and which audiences uh do we need to be moving? With the technologies that are out there and what they want, uh, what the consumer wants, these these prospects. We know we have to talk to them about what they want to hear about or they shut down. So we're trying to get more specialized, right? So we'll still do the big fall, spring, summer. But we're really trying to spend more time getting all of the assets built to do these program. Level campaigns, because the kid that wants to be the firefighter. Doesn't doesn't necessarily want to hear about a bunch of other things. They they want to hear the firefighter. That's what gets them excited. So. That takes a lot of time, takes a lot of content, takes a lot of photos. Um, and video testimonials, all that good stuff. But we're going to be spending more time on that.
Have these goals changed?
No, not since, huh? Nope. And those goals are going to be um long range vision for tw- uh through twenty twenty-five. Yeah. Um, I wanted to highlight also who we work with. Um, we do work with a media agency. And they are able to negotiate the best packages for us much better than I could do just on my own because of the clients that they represent. And the money they're able to bring to the table. Um, they also can serve as an extension of our staff as needed. And and that is just a a nice little. Uh, support system to have when you absolutely do, you need the help. And there have been times I have to call my fairy godmother. Um, to to figure out some some stuff. Now granted, with as you, as we have grown our additional staff, then uh. The the need for the agency to step in is decreasing and and that would be expected.
What agency is that?
Um, Armstrong Chamberlain. And we also work uh through Armstrong. We also have a connection to a national digital agency. And they are a Google Premier partner. They're a meta business partner and they're also a TikTok marketing partner. Um, they're a a five thousand, um, the Inc. Five thousand company. And they work with uh more than a hundred and twenty colleges, universities and technical colleges across the country. And they're even known for some of their own digital, their their own proprietary um. DSP digital delivery platforms. Um, our representative there is a VP and one of the strategists behind a lot of the stuff that we do. And he also teaches, he's an adjunct professor at University of Florida, the University of Central Florida and Virginia Commonwealth University. So I just wanted to share that, too, because I was, I was, you know, that's good stuff and you want to know that you're working with good people and they definitely understand. Higher education. And all of the different types of. Institutions there are in higher education. Some of the challenge, yeah, so we have a question.
Just one quick, um. Where all the students have IPSs now. Uh, do we? And I don't know, I can't remember whether Navigator, Zello or any of those navigators run by Cooter and Zello's. I don't know who, I don't remember who Zello's run by, but they're the two most that that. All the Kansas high schools use for individual plans of study. And I know that they have the website. On. Uh, I'm not exactly sure if they have advertising or not through there. But that's something that every high school student touches because of their IPS.
I appreciate that. That might be a.
Because that's a requirement within the state.
Okay, yeah, good to know. Thank you very much. Um, some of the challenges, uh, the GA for Google Analytics. So we've had to switch our Google Analytics. And they are very different from the original analytics. And we're probably going to lose some of that data when we relaunch that website. And when it starts to go down through those webpages. Our data isn't going to sync up necessarily. So we're um trying to do what we can to kind of capture pictures of data now. But that's going to be wonky for us until we get um several months of GA four data. And then we can have a a new bench line and comparison. So I just wanted to highlight that. And we are working on a new website. It is true and it is coming. Um, we were able to climb a a steep mountain over the summer. Um, with um Brian and Kyle and IT and Sarah on our team. And I know Noah has pitched in. And we we've got that they now, they have the assets built and now they're, they are into building the actual pages and getting the content. And the content team is is deeply involved. So we are hoping for a public, soft public, or a soft launch. In October with more pages going actual public in um December or by the end of the year. So I wanted to highlight that. That's still a challenge. And then with that, the SEO will take. Um, kind of ties into those analytics. It could take a little bit of a hit, but um we're aware of that. Um. And just generally overall, we're not going to see that these. Increases that you're seeing and that is with people at the at the right desks. Because back in the day when we had five, we didn't have marketing automation. We didn't have digital advertising. We didn't have the social media management that's required. We weren't doing the video production with motion graphics. Um, but now we have those bodies and they're starting to get that machine running. So I don't expect to be able to bring you. These huge numbers all the time. Our next, our next um challenge is going to be just to keep, keep that machine humming and so that we can. Keep nabbing those those increases where we can. And the last thing, um, well, almost the last thing, uh, six expert tips. I thought this was. This was informative for getting the most out of your marketing dollars. And it, and this is from HubSpot. And it says, number one, understand your customer journey. And that is something that uh my team's very interested in and we're researching and and diving deeper into that. Um, number two, hire an agency. We we have that. Get an in-house team. Because of your support. We feel like we are well-rounded and we've got a good group of experts sitting in um in our marketing department. Invest in content repurposing and that also goes back to our. Our uh the people that we have here and and what we're doing. And then the last two are repri- reprioritized underperforming channels. And that's where we're at right now. Um, and then constantly reevaluate. And we do that every day. So um. My budget isn't apples to apples every year because I'm, we we flip it, we move it, we change it, we slide it. Uh, constantly doing different things um based on the need and the requests that come in. And based on what the data is telling us. Um. So I will leave you with this. I'm almost done, but ju- from pure Facebook and Instagram numbers, not paid advertising. Just from putting some fun, good stuff out there um through our social media manager. In twenty twenty-one, our engagement was ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven with Instagram. And we had over seven point four million impressions. And actually, those numbers were down from the year before. Um, the seven point four million impressions was actually down ten percent. So that, I mean, they were down. But Facebook impressions in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we've had eight million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand impressions. And that is a twelve percent increase. And our engagement is up one hundred and thirty-five percent. And we now have video views that we weren't even able to track before because we really weren't doing enough to. Uh, get it trackable, but we've had over nine hundred and twenty-one video views. Instagram, I just think this is super cool. Um, we had eight thousand, four hundred and thirty engagement, down twenty-one percent. The year prior. And this year, we've had over uh twenty-two hundred, sixty-seven percent increase with over two hundred. And two thousand um. Impressions on engagement, well, engagement and then impressions are over fifteen million on Instagram this year alone. That's an increase of one thousand, two hundred and forty-three percent. Um, so lots of good stuff going on and um. We're excited about what the HLC report also highlighted and all the positives in there. That we can use as content bits and pieces to reshine and put a spotlight on Butler as we're going out and looking for um. More students to come to us. So I think in overall. I just want to thank you all for the support you have given the institution and um. After coming out of COVID, not everybody was doing that and you had the guts and the courage to do it. So I want to thank you very much for it and. See if there were any questions you had.
Uh, when you said the overall brand synergy and those percentage increases, is that a one-year increase in those or a three-year?
The um. Are you talking about the handout?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just year over year.
That's a one-year increase?
Mm-hmm.
And then could you tell me ballpark what the twenty twenty-two advertising budget was?
Twenty twenty.
The year before last, because last year you guys went up four hundred and twenty thousand dollars extra.
It would have been, it would have been, um. Like if you take like seven thirty-four or seven hundred and thirty thousand minus three sixty-five. Because that's, that's the budget that got placed into the budget last year. So it's going to be three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars less than that.
And then. Could you go back? First of all, on the goals. I would like to see a goal of increased enrollment on there somewhere. Because I've mentioned that anywhere.
Yeah, well, yeah, right. Well, we focus, we're inquiries and application.
All right, but what, what do you do when somebody inquires? How do you hook them?
Well, and I I think the strategic management uh goal, which is the first goal. That's, that's what you're asking right there. And and that's what marketing tries to impact is that enrollment process. So if if. If you look at that um, that inverted pyramid.
I would like to see the technology funnel.
Yeah, yeah, well. Say it again.
The technology funnel, the information funnel, whatever it is.
Yeah, the. Yeah, yeah, that inverted funnel here.
Yeah, the admissions.
Yeah, the top of that is really marketing is trying to get people into those first two areas. And that's where all this energy goes. So all this, uh, if somebody raises or finally raises their hand and says, hey, I think I'm interested. Marketing can say, we've done something here. We've impacted. But then when we get into the next step, since that's when enrollment management begins to come in and partner with marketing. On contacting and visiting and then marketing begins to pull further away as that contact occurs.
So enrollment management is another department?
Well, admissions, advising, it's comprehensive student services, all the student services stuff.
So the information that that Kelly's sharing with you is what we really have an impact on and control over. It is bringing people to the table to say, hey, I'm interested in going to college at Butler. And then then we work with our partners with enrollment management to say, okay. Then how do we get them to move from an app, fill out an application to enrolling?
So. Spending an additional quarter, twenty thousand dollars, how did that change as a conversion rate? Of the people at the top of the funnel, how did we get? How many more applicants did we get for that? If you're saying we went from seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. So we, that was almost a double of our. Advertising budget.
I can.
I'm just not familiar with the total advertising budget is.
I can speak to with the with the funnels when you're talking about what the, what, how that money. Uh, uh, helped move people from the funnel. So I I'm looking at the top of the funnel and these, sorry, and these numbers are duplicated. But when we look at the um in inquiry, applied and enrolled. Coming out um that report. All of the funnels were up except, so we were up in in new to Butler. We were up and and now these are duplicated, so I'm not going to worry about giving you the actual numbers. I'm just telling you that um. They did end up being up. They did end up being up and the inquiry, the top part of these funnels. Inquiries were up. In new to Butler, in the new category, in the Butler County category, in the twenty-two to thirty-four, in the thirty-five to forty-nine. And in um and in the online. Funnel, we were down in Kansas resident. Transfer students. Nineteen to forty-nine and nineteen to twenty-one. And as I analyze this, I think the nineteen to twenty-one is. Is the problem group because they are in each of these other ones. So the nineteen to twenty-one was down a um a little over eight hundred, su- eight hundred and fifty students. So that's gonna impact your nineteen to forty-one funnel and it's gonna impact your transfer students because that's who they are, they're nineteen to to twenty-one. And it's gonna impact Kansas residents funnel. So.
Uh I guess I would specifically like to see some data. You know, what was our total advertising budget? How much did we increase it and we still lost? Three point eight percent of students last year after spending an additional four hundred and twenty. And administration is asking for another additional four hundred and twenty thousand next year, we said it's gonna stay in the budget.
Yeah, it's in the budget.
Right, so that's.
Okay, when you talk about the total advertising dollars.
Yes.
It was like seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then, cause that's seven hundred and thirty, it's seven hundred and thirty-four, I mean, I might be four thousand dollars off, but three hundred and sixty-five. Thousand dollars was added to the advertising budget for last year.
The advertising budget.
Right.
More or less.
You didn't, it wasn't.
You're saying it's currently seven.
Yeah, I wasn't quite, yeah, I wasn't quite doubled, it didn't quite double.
You said it's currently seven thirty-four. Right?
Yeah.
Are we that same, same thing? It's currently seven thirty-four and you take away three sixty-five. That's actually three sixty-nine, right? It's a double, I mean, that's ninety-eight percent increase. In advertising budget for a three twenty percent loss.
I.
I hear a lot of funnel talk. But I mean, there's people in there just because they saw it. How many are actually acquiring to Butler, I mean, like, hey, I want to check out Butler, where's the?
Right? Well, that's the, that's the.
Yeah. Okay, so this year we're currently. Two percent down?
On day one.
Right, whatever you.
I think it's, it kind of speaks, I mean, I think marketing is actually doing their job as far as getting the inquiries, so maybe the. The problem area is after the inquiries get here, whether or not they're. Being turned into students because that's what she's reporting on, I'm taking on as the inquiries, which are drastically up. But like what Tom's saying, then you gotta go further down and say, okay, what are we doing with those inquiries, once they how? And that's where things are falling apart.
Is it an inquiry like? To acquire to seek knowledge about?
Email, that's, you, yeah, we'll try to capture email and.
Not, I mean, I get tons of mail from you guys.
If I get your email.
Like, that's, that's.
I care about getting your email.
Exactly.
And your phone number.
Right, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm trying to parse the language of views versus inquiries.
Well, it's awareness and it is, it's awareness and brand presence and that's important for marketing too. Because they're, they're, they don't just see you and then they, they come through your door, they might think about us for three years, I mean, the. Little buying cycle too is is can be extended for higher ed, but we. When I talked about earlier about learning the student journey, that's also what I'm talking about is. When, when we do get them here, how how do we nurture them and get them into the enrolled? Into the rolled seat, which is lead qualification in my world, I've got forty-five thousand, five hundred names we nurture. They're not here yet, cause once they apply or once they, once they apply, they drop out of my system and we, we back off from talking to them. So we're gonna get ready to do a scrub on those forty-five thou- my original contract with that system was only twenty-five thousand names. And I knew if I had, you know, here we are three years later, so it's a good problem, forty-five thousand names. But I'm getting ready to run them through a scrubbing process three times a year. So we can get back into the lead, lead qualification too. Is that my, you, and you've probably heard me say it before, it's like, are they all twelve years old, how come, you know? Well, they're not, but there's a lot we've got to learn about it and then I gotta get the bad ones out before I spend money. To increase our license to go vote the twenty-five thousand names.
Yes, I'm just trying to make the point with. All of our increased costs, this is an extra four hundred and twenty thousand dollars again. I haven't seen any results from the last one.
And and I I think that that answer that you're looking for, I think is something that we're evolving to, to where. How can we, how can we show that return on investment? And um and you're only seeing part of it right now. Which is, and which is a good part, which is that that first part needs to be hitting on all cylinders, do we have enough people? In the funnel to get them to the point of uh matriculating down into an enrolled person? If that wasn't humming and that wasn't working, then our chances of getting a student here is, is you have to hit more home runs that way. So I think. What Kelly was trying to say is that we're, we're doing it right and the funds that you have given that department. To do all the things that they do is creating that opportunity.
That I, I think right now, uh um. It's a little over. I'm gonna, I'm estimating over five thousand, so we have over five thousand in the fall twenty twenty-three funnel that are either sitting in the admitted. Or the inquiry stage. Five thousand people.
We have roughly. And eight thousand.
So that's the part of the pie, I, that's the part of the pie I'm watching, right, I mean, I'm trying to grow, I'm trying to get that baby up to seven, then I wanted up to ten, then I want it up to twelve.
And and some of those inquiries are. Uh. This. Like Tom said, you know. With IPSs now running four years, you've got freshmen now looking at colleges. You know, that won't hit a college until another four years. But at least if they're looking at it and continue to look at it over year, over year, over year, they're still thinking about it. And and you're, you you still have to market it in order to still capture those kids.
But what does it take to convert them?
Right.
That's, that's the next step.
Yeah, that is.
It takes a college with fish.
Takes a lot of touch, takes a lot of conversation and communication with them and, yeah, a lot of work. And the other, the other piece of it is, it's not just converting them to, you know. Students that are in the seats, it's also retaining them, so. We see, you know, we see growth in new enrollment and all of those kinds of things, but you also have to retain the ones. Uh we, we see a lot of churn in the first twenty days and through the semester of students that. Go ahead and enroll and they say they're gonna take classes and they show up, but then they, they drop out or they drop their classes for some reason and so. Also try to capture that information so we understand, you know, if they're dropping. Why, what, you know, what are the overarching issues that are causing them to drop, is it financial, is it transportation, whatever? So it's not just bringing them in the door, but it's keeping the ones that we have here as well.
I think what Kelly was saying as far as um having specific, you know, video or content available for. Each thing, whether it's firefighter, you know, whatever the uh the goal is for that student. Is so key with this younger generation because like my kids are like, oh yeah, my attention span's about this long.
Yeah.
So they have to watch ten videos, they just want, I just want to know about the fire department, like I just wanted.
That's exactly right.
And that's, that's gonna be a huge undertaking, but it, once they're there, they're there, you know?
Well, and I will mention for the first time in talking about being proactive rather than reactive with the staff we had, they, they now have their um. Calendar planned for the whole year, they know what two to three programs that they're building assets for, so they're working a, a couple months ahead. And then um so we're gonna be seeing some new programs highlighted this year. Um as they try to figure out how to build the new assets and get the new ones out, cause we have, we have several of them, but there's a whole lot we don't have.
And and that's a big deal, that's, I mean, that's your investment, cause part of that investment included salaries to get people to do the work.
I think you should really pay attention to what the twenty-something year olds, at least forty-something year olds. Don't always want to ask the younger kids because we think that we know what we're doing and. Sometimes age and experience can get in your way because you're looking at through it at a different filter than when what they are.
It's, yeah, our little social media managers have knocked it out of the park and I, I'm hooked up for the notifications and. The cooking monster typing at a typewriter. Commenting all, people are commenting on that all weekend and she's had some, some great impressions with some of this and I was like, I don't get it, but. Yeah, but you don't have to.
I don't.
Know that Kim, when I went to college, there was a great desire to finish all four of your years because you had. You either went to college or you went to the University of Vietnam.
Yeah.
You know, and so it was like, I'm gonna be focused.
I just had one idea for the board. How about we don't take another four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the marketing, we've got a lot of people with eyeballs on us, but take some of that money to enrollment management. Hire a person, take seventy grand of that. Hit two people and cut the advertising budget, I think we need more eyeballs and more billboards. We need somebody to get the people in here that have seen it, not just people see it, don't care.
So I I I can answer that Shelby, I think you're robbing Peter to pay Paul there. I think, I think if we have a comprehensive marketing and and enrollment management program, you've got to have both things working. In tandem and and as strong as you can have them. And if you have that, then you'll start to succeed, so right now you just gave some money to the marketing to get that, that top of the funnel working. And you want to keep that going. And so um we've had that conversation too, because, because what we're, we're starting to see some things with further down the funnel. And what we're hearing is that, yeah, you you know, that don't fall in that trap because you're just gonna end up decreasing your opportunity at the top. And then we'll be dealing with that issue at some point. And actually, you saw that issue when the, you, the college decreased all of its funding for marketing and diminished it and it has to huge impact, so. You got, you've got to keep competitive, you've got to keep in there.
We don't have any.
Didn't say you did, didn't say you did.
Right.
Well, we're doubling the budget, losing two percent.
Well, that, 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 that doesn't equal, that isn't, the investment doesn't equal what you just said.
Right, but if I'm selling Pepsi, I spend double my marketing budget and I still sell a little less Pepsi next year.
Yeah, we're not selling Pepsi though, what we're, what we're doing, we're finding.
Education, we could hopefully get jobs.
Yeah.
You gotta get.
A- and that process is a, it's a process, i- it's not just, it's not just a song.
Cause actually in between each of these um, these funnel steps are actually another two to three levels of where that. Where that buyer, where that that student is in their, in their discovery and their exploration and their commitment. There's several.
I understand, but I just have black and white enrollment decline for ten years. I know, I keep doing the exact same thing, there's more money, but I mean, now we have less money.
I.
In the bank.
I think what, what Kelly presented tonight shows that they're doing some different things and that, you know, that it's, that it's. Increasing the numbers at the top of the funnel that are, you know, it's impactful so that we can filter more down through the funnel, so.
What's the difference between last year and this year?
Okay, let's, uh, you know, we're almost getting to seven o'clock, so if you don't mind.
Wrap it up.
Can we wrap it up and for continued discussion? On the other and maybe raises a lot more questions for me, so there we go.
So.
Thanks Forrest.
Everyone's okay.
Thanks Forrest.
Thanks, thank you.